All right, welcome everyone to the Thursday, November 6, 2025 Town Council Work Session. That's the call to order and we always start with the pledge, so let's. If Linda Vasallo would like to lead us, that'd be great.
The United States of America, two of the father of which is hands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. We'll segue right into item number two, it's public comment, public comment, it's time for the public address to Town Council matters related specifically to items on the agenda. Each speaker is asked to limit remarks to three minutes and leave your name and give us your name and address. I know we have a couple of people in line, we'll wait a second. And if those are online, if something comes up, you're thinking about it, you can always reach out to Town Hall tomorrow. Shoot us an email, phone call, and we'll be more than happy to follow up. All right, let's keep rolling. The first item on the list is the Town of North Beach Breakwater Project. On board docs, both in the public and or for council, you have them, you have the information. This is for information purposes only, further discussion? And who's going to handle that?
If I could, Mayor Linda Vasallo, Town Administrator, Donnie's going to talk a little bit more about specifics of design and construction. But the job this week was to bring back a better idea, I'm sorry, this month was bring back a better idea of what we thought this structure was going to look like because we had sent some photos out that didn't really represent what we were trying to do. So, Donnie, if you wouldn't just mind walking through where we are. The council has received a copy of that design that we sent them, so I'll take it from there.
So, we'll conservation was here at the last meeting, they did their presentation. What they gave was two options, or actually three options for the breakwater structures themselves. One option was all recycled concrete, if you remember, and that was concrete, the big road pans, eight foot wide, eight inches thick and 16 foot long. They were using the road pans and they would be concrete from the surface all the way out of the water to the top of the breakwater structure. Second, second option they gave was the concrete structures coming up to mean low water and then it'll be riprap to match existing breakwaters and the same type of stone that you see there on Ninth Street and the breakwaters out, you know, of the pier that you can see. So that was option two, and the third option was for all riprack rock, like, you know, originally like you see at most places. It was a big price advantage, I don't remember off the top of my head, I think it was around at least a $200,000 savings, even if we went with the combination with the concrete and the riprap on top. Um, the, I don't remember off the top of my head, I know it was in the meeting minutes from last time, but it was a pretty significant savings. And also, there's a lot of savings that comes up because they don't have to, it's, you know, a lot of green, they don't have to remake, remove the rock, it's already made. So you save a lot on production. So they would like to get an answer from us, from the council, from you guys to see which way. And then they are continuing their design, but they like to get a preference in which way the council would like to see the breakwaters themselves. Just a quick note, it happened to be luckily, last Thursday when we had all the flooding, that Ryan, the main guy from the Seoul Conservation was giving a presentation, came here and he met with a representative from the Chesapeake Bay Foundation. So they got to really, I walked down there with them, we walked out to Seventh Street, we walked to Fifth Street. They got to see firsthand and he was bringing her in, it was a lady that was with him and he was bringing her in to get the permit ball rolling. They wanted to show her, show what we're doing, get Chesapeake Bay Foundation on board with the project. So the timing couldn't have been better, they got here Thursday morning, they saw the whole picture, so that was a perfect time and then they met and went over the project and he went over the project in detail with her. So I think she'll be a great help about that when it gets to their permit stage. But really, they were just looking for an answer and then they're going to continue with the design. Hopefully, design will be completed, the first phase by the end of December. So if the council had time.
Enough of discussion, obviously, there's three options. I think is, I think everybody up here agrees that something has to be done and if we can do as as much as natural and bay friendly, I think that makes all the sense in the world. So let's turn on your mics, ask the questions and then we'll go.
Yeah, I don't really have a question as much as comment. When I first started looking at this, I did not like, I didn't like the idea of just all slats and coming out of the water and that's what you're looking at, but I didn't think that the rock alone would provide travel routes for the horseshoe crab either. So I was leaning towards that middle ground myself because I think that would be provide the best benefit. Or, you know, and it's, it would do everything we're wanting to do. Protecting a resource out there and, and, and you can those that border that, you know, hopefully, we can get all of that taken care of too.
So, so just apologize, so we're clear, you're looking at the concrete slabs?
Yep.
With the
Rock on top.
Rock on top with the oysters?
Yep.
Yep, I think that was option two, and I think that's what our soil conservation was also recommending when they were here that night. And like I said, I don't want to give the council wrong information, but I'm pretty sure it was a 200, 150 to 200,000 dollars, even if we do the combination over.
Yeah, what I remember, I think there was like a couple hundred thousand between each one of them.
Right.
The alternatives, the most expensive being the rock, the least expensive being the slab. And the combination came in between and it just seemed to me to be the best bang for the buck.
Really a good point that the, I like that, a good point that the engineer made when we were out on site looking is the slabs, being that they're eight feet wide and 16 feet long, they provide a bigger base for the base. Because we, you know, we discussed that we had the riprap had sunk earlier on the north side there. But now you're taking that and spreading it out, so you're spreading it over a greater volume of bottom. So you have a lot less chance for that to sink because it's, you know, instead of being rock, 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 you have oh, eight foot wide by 16 foot long section there. So I think it'll be better serve us as far as more stable all of a sudden.
That, and I think it provides actually better habitat for muscle, or not the muscle, the oysters, than just simply the rock alone.
Yes, sir, I agree.
All right, anybody else have some comment input? And I see Mickey grabbing.
I'm also leaning towards the combo option. Mainly, all the, if we just did the slab, honestly, I was a kid who grew up here, I see a flat surface, I'm going to find a way to get on it. Honestly, seeing rocks, I'm still going to find a way to get on it. But it's less appetizing to go out there and lay on a rock than it is a nice flat surface above the water. So, and then figure out how to jump off of. I, I like the idea of the recycled concrete, one. It's less stuff going to the landfill somewhere, so that's good to get it off and get it repurposed. I like having the wider footprint for the base, that makes sense to me, especially with the rocks on that side. I know how soft that side of the ground is, you sink about six, eight inches when you step on it normally. Having the channels for horseshoe crabs and doing the basis for the oysters, whether that be within this plan or phase two. That makes total sense to me to try and rebuild that backup. Yeah, so I'm more leaning towards that combo.
I think, personally, I think anything we need, anything we do here, whatever option. Going to be need some educational component because you're right, you don't want people getting on this at all, especially for those oysters there. So there, there needs to be some placard somewhere explaining what we're looking at, what it's there for. And so that the educational piece will be important.
And both of them will end up protecting and breaking down the wave action heading that way. So no matter which way we go, we're helping to solve that, so.
Absolutely.
Hello, Mayor. Everyone. I say very bad sometime, I concur with what they said, so I don't have to repeat it, that's it, thank you.
Thank you, Gray.
Mr. Mayor, request the floor? I, I concur with my colleagues, I have no comment.
All right. Right now, we got option two, it sounds like, but we got.
Yep, I, I agree with option two and I also like the signage idea. And, you know, to Mickey's point, you know, maybe some other signage, like keep off the rocks. You know, because sometimes you just have to put it out there, you know, it's not just understood, so. But yeah, I'm all for option two, I love this project.
Well, Mickey was special, so I'll let, so you say that and leave it at that.
Well, yeah, you could put, you have to put sign.
He'll be the first one out there.
We've got to, we've got to put signs out there because, you know, we have warnings, like, don't eat this ladder, you know, just like, okay. Because someone tried. No, I'm in concurrence with this, is this picture here an actual one out somewhere or is this a mockup? That's a live one, okay. Oh, then I definitely concur. That would probably be going out to the bay on the base. Okay, I have nothing further.
That shows what you see above the water, so you'd be looking at that and all the concrete, big structures would be under that in the water.
You know, you're talking about signage, you know, I love the things on the boardwalk that talk about the horseshoe crab and things, are you talking about signage like that, like maybe an explanation too? Some kind of cool, or maybe even about the oyster spat when they do that?
Yeah.
I mean, I love the whole teaching aspect as well.
As excited as Ryan is about the project, what I was going to make sure that they include is something big enough to tell the whole oyster spat and the whole, you know, the whole design, but have something on the boardwalk railing, like we currently do at Third Street and every other places. But have like that in a couple of different sections and explain the whole project. And then also we'd have signs out actually in the bay on pylons closer to structures because the problem is with those structures is when a boat tries to pull up, you can't see, it's going to be wide at the bottom and then as it goes up. So it's high tide and the boat tries to pull up there, we'll have pylons out at the very edge saying, you know, do not climb on rocks and danger structure underwater, but I'll make sure that the, I know he probably does have it in there, but make sure the educational signs, I think that'd be great to have, you know, describe what it's doing with the oysters and everything else.
I think the last time Ryan was here, I asked him about, like, if we do the oysters, can it be, like, protected? And because it would fall in the sanctuary and some of the oysters, it's not something that people can go out and harvest freely. Which was also my concern of keeping people away from just scooping it clear.
We will definitely, once we get to that phase, we will do what we always do and try to come up with the best education that we can possibly do and then at that point, we just do the best we can. Yep. All right, so, Donnie, it sounds like, number two?
We need a motion, you need a motion.
I don't need it.
Okay. Yep, I will, I will pass that information on and they will continue with the design with option two.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
You don't have to sit down, you got to stay up. All right, you're going to be.
I got my new inserts.
What we're going to bring up now is the North Beach Boardwalk railing replacement. As you know, we did the boardwalk, or excuse me, the pier, which looks amazing, it's a real pier, it has real wood. It, it held up pretty good at the last storm. But in the next phase is the railing idea. We did change some of the railing already where we put the ramp. And I think that looks amazing what they did there. But so you have the memo in your package. And Donnie, you can continue and council, please ask your questions because we want, we want to have guidance to move forward to start getting pricing.
All right, a little background, you know, we, the boardwalk's built in the nine, early 90s and as time goes on, as you all walk along, you notice sections of railing has, you know, the boardwalk's been, decking's been replaced with a Trex material on the main structure of the boardwalk and we redid the boardwalk twice. The wooden part, the pier part, since I've been here, but the railing has never really been addressed yet. And this is not only for the wood railing, but a lot of this we're talking about is actually the bolts and the struck, the bolts, the metal plates that hold the posts to the boardwalk. So the years of saltwater has ate up the bolts, they're galvanized, they're becoming pretty bad shape. If you go down closer to Third Street, Second Street and you wiggle that railing and you look down, you'll notice a lot of the bolts are almost gone, they rusted off so much, they're gone. So we start, we, this project is also not only for aesthetic appearance, but also to fix and correct all the supports hole in the railing. We were asked by Councilman Hummel to look at a couple of options and other members of council. We did look at the stainless steel type cable option. And that has pros and cons, I mean, I think in some places it could be good. But for our boardwalk, I just feel like it's, could be a hazard for little kids getting their head stuck between it. And then we did just some ballpark budget pricing to give you an idea. And that runs about $80 per linear foot, so each foot, five strands high would be $80. Whereas wood, it comes in closer to 15 to $20 for wood railing, not counting removal, that's just a new. So it's a big cost difference, it does, you know, if you were at a house, sitting on your house and you had a deck and I think the stainless steel could be good for that, but just for the amount of boardwalk we have, it's a couple of different. If you lose one strand, you have to tighten up the whole run, so. But they are places that use it, but I just feel like wood is, we can replace a picket a lot easier than we can do maintenance on the stainless steel cable. Councilman Hummel was talking about the area down there, from Hatchess Corner to Seventh Street, which we do get a lot of wave action. We did have luckily, Thursday when we had the high tides, we didn't have as much wind as we had the week before when we had a little flooding. So we did have one section, but it just came off of the post, it didn't, railing didn't get broke out, so we could easily attach that back. But with the, I know we had talked about maybe cable, just in that area, but with the breakwater structures going in place, I think that'll provide a lot of protection there, so. Um, I think, you know, wood is, like I said, it's just a lot easier for us to maintain. And cable with the price, it would be, you know, 80% higher probably than wood. So that's basically, but with that, you know, we're really looking at getting the structure, the posts and the bolts and the main part that support the railing repair too.
And council, if I could, this project's already budgeted in this year's fiscal '26 capital improvement budget, I believe we have $50,000 in there for this year. So really, this is more of about aesthetics than it is about a budget discussion today. There's $50,000 in the FY '26 budget, capital budget, and there's $50,000 in the FY '27 capital budget.
And that was for the wood? Or just for the project?
Originally, pricing was done, but then we were asked by Councilman Hummel to check into it, which made sense because the water flows through it, but just with all the other cons. But when we did the budgeting, we did for wood.
You did for wood, okay.
Mr. Mayor, if I can come in? So my concern is that the wire is astronomically expensive and it's, it doesn't seem to be practical. I don't want babies' heads going through wires or small dogs and I know my children would scale that thing in less than two minutes, so I would really support your recommendation and the original budget of wood.
Thank you.
My, my thoughts, I actually personally like the cable. Only because aesthetically, you can see much better through it. But, that, that said, there's way more boardwalk here and it would be astronomically expensive to go down that road. So I, I would be supportive of doing the traditional wood picket option.
Thank you.
Thank you for looking into the wire. Um, with it coming in at that price, the wood makes sense, repair and whatnot. And again, if it's something that, if in 10 years they're looking at it again, it could be another discussion point. So on which way do we want to go then? So, again, what I've seen it, it was at a very large commercial, it was at the loose Cape May Ferry. So it could have been done with the transit authority where cost at that point was not a problem. And they get different type of waves and action than we do, so. And again, they might not have as many people traversing the boardwalk in the same fashion that we do here with kids and animals, they have a lot of just waiting between the ferries. So the wood makes sense for me, I know the new section where we did the ramp looks good, I think we made a change to put the pickets on the outside.
Yeah. We would follow that pattern also because it makes more sense to me than the original. It protects the pickets because we, the way we did the railing for the boardwalk, we have a plate over top, so at least the wood, the rainwater and everything's not going right down to the top of the pickets. Originally have it where the pickets are exposed and I didn't understand that, really, to be honest, but hopefully, but yep, thank you for that.
Are we going to keep the Trex top rail or are we going to move back to wood?
Back to wood, I think. I would recommend going back to wood with that.
If you go and you, I know you saw, probably most people have, it just fits better, it, it's easier, it's more secure. We can tighten it down better, it's going to protect the one underneath, it, with the Trex, it's so flexible.
Yeah, it heats up, it expands, that's why I was asking, like, I've seen.
The goal is wood, if possible. You know, we do, once we install it, they'll go down with a sander, sand it, make sure there's no splinter, but at the end of the day, it is a boardwalk and splinters happen, so.
We have legit.
I don't have very much else to add, I mean, in an ideal world, a transparent would be absolutely perfect, doesn't exist. The metal is way too expensive, so we'll just, I, yeah, I go along with everyone else, let's go back to wood slats. Crank your head up as you're driving along so you can see the water. But I got a coupe, so it's a little hard to see. So yes, there's no, it's, it's an easy decision.
Yeah, I like that one too, safety first.
That's definitely a big factor cost and I think safety with the, as the amount of kids and dogs and everything could be an issue. So, thank you.
Also member left?
You're good.
I apologize, I apologize. I am so sorry, Councilman Dotson. I do want to add one, one thing to this is that what, what Councilman Hummel wanted us to do was look at the wiring between Hatchess Corner and Seventh Street. You will see coming to you another CIP project from Seventh Street to Hatchess Corner. Because at this last storm, we have ideas to drive down sheeting, we have our storm, our sewer drain going through there, so that will be, so between the oyster reefs, that redoing of the boardwalk right there and the Seventh Street pump that we already haven't, you already proven in the budget, between those three items, it should really bring some great security in that area when it comes to title. It won't stop it, Chesapeake Bay is the largest bay in the United States, but we will do our best to mitigate it as quick as possible. All right, so.
Thank you.
I didn't, I didn't actually hear the cost of the two, but that's fine. The other thing I was going to talk about is what you just touched on, like, is that if we don't start to focus on the beach, we'll have bigger problems. So I'm hoping that come next year, we're going to have to just cough up the money, start putting in some grants. Because if we don't address it, we're going to have bigger problems, boardwalk will be the least. Being because the sand is already pushing up, it's almost on top of the boardwalk now, all the way down the beach. So something to start thinking about.
We'll be going into budget there soon, so we can definitely bring stuff to the table for the council to approve. All right, thank you so much.
Yep.
All right, next, you can go ahead and sit down now. For a minute, don't get carried away. All right, we're going to be right into CIP projects breakdown and Veronica's going to lead us in this.
Good evening, Mayor and council members, I'm Veronica Atkinson and I'm going to present the CIP this evening. So first, we're going to, I'm going to go over our current fiscal year 2026 capital improvement plan. Of course, we refer to it as CIP. We will also review the staff's proposed 2027 CIP. As a brief recap, each budget year, the municipality approves, presents a six-year capital improvement plan. The six-year CIP is a strategic tool designed to guide and prioritize the town's infrastructure and capital investments. The CIP is in a perpetual fund, meaning once the project is approved, the money does not go away at the end of the fiscal or budget year. CIP projects can include roads, water and sewer systems, parks, public buildings, recreational facilities, or major equipment purchases. The CIP outlines a six-year plan, but only the first year of the plan is formally adopted by the mayor and council. We are currently again operating fiscal year 2026. The adopted FY '26 CIP totals, fought totaled $588,000. The six-year plan totaled $3,188,000. You, go ahead.
We, we don't have that. It's not showing up on the, on the, yeah.
Yeah, we'll send it over, actually I have a copy. So I can say anything and you all won't know, no, just kidding. Okay, so back to our FY '26 overview. To date, we have successfully completed and closed out seven projects. Two from 2026, which was the purchase of the BACCO for Department of Public Works and a street legal gator for the waterfront. The remaining five projects that were closed out were from the prior year's CIP budgets. Now let's review staff proposed 2027 six-year plan, which totals $3,296,950. That's over six years, we know we only adopt the first year and those other years are just for planning and can always be changed or moved. The new projects are listed in the first table. Boardwalk repairs, which includes Seventh Street Finger Pier for $500,000. Generators at two of the identified pump stations for $140,000. Supervisory control and data acquisition, SCADA, I'm saying it correctly, $34,000. Sidewalk replacement, that's projected out to begin in FY 2028 for $100,000. And the replacement of the Town Hall fire alarm system, we have that projected out to 2031 for $22,950. The remaining five projects are ongoing from prior years. Does anybody want to know what a SCADA is? Because I did look it up. Now we're, this slide shows the funding sources for the FY 2027 CIP projects. All projects currently are proposed to be funded through the general fund. Next slide. The mayor and council will review the proposed 2027 CIP. And I guess listening this evening, maybe input some additional projects to be looked at. Staff will return in early 2026 to present the operating budget. I know I went through that fast, but thank you very much, any questions?
Are the generators quick standby, are they like long-term run setups?
They would be there and we're looking at two options, we put that in there because it. The generators are for Greenwood and Chesapeake Avenue and they were put in originally in 1985. The problem with those now, you can't get replacement parts for the panels or the transfer switches. We just had one that failed at Greenwood Avenue, but we put that price in for generators, but we are also considering backup pumps like we put. considering backup pumps like we put at down on the beach and at Bay Avenue. They're the same price. So it says generators as like Veronica stated, you know, that can change, but we wanted to put the budget in there. The pumps, why we like them better and the mayor actually was on site last Friday when we had a failure at Greenwood Avenue. We lost the phase of power, we, you know, you, and we lost the transfer switch, so we didn't have power either way. If you had a backup pump in that situation, you would always have a pump because it's diesel driven. So we have that on the beach, the big pump on the beach and also at Bay Avenue. And we have a portable. Luckily, we had a portable at the public workshop that uh council was so gracious and mayor to purchase for me back when I started. And we wheeled that up there at four thirty in the morning and got that started. So we kept the station going. So pump is a lot better. Um, the wording is just generators in the report. So we're, we're kinda leaning towards putting backup pumps there and then you'd have three, three pumps there at all times. And if you pull the pump out to get it worked on, you know, you still have two pumps there top right with, but.
Yeah, I ask, cause like at work I have a generator that's on like a tank that can be there three days straight if I have to. So it was just trying to figure out.
Either one, the generator or the backup pumps designed run for two days. Yeah, if it had to run for two days straight, you know, one-off cycling could run. The tank size is designed right underneath of it to run for two days. Yep.
I, I will say, um, it did go out at, I think, two thirty. They got there at four thirty, but two thirty went out. And it was a BG&E issue. And they responded that morning, but it was totally out of our control. This new plan will allow and protect the pump stations throughout, you know, each pump station, because we're already rebuilding the one on Chesapeake Avenue. To if something happens out of our control, our residents still will be protected. So. But yeah, two thirty in the morning, uh, two DPW staffs had to come in and just start hooking up the portable pump and they did a phenomenal job. We, we learned a lot that night, so good job.
Thanks. I will let them know tomorrow.
Veronica, I had a question and I don't know, maybe DB or Mike knows. I was trying to figure out where is the curb and gutter included in this? Like I didn't know if it was grouped in with something else that was titled in here or the curb and guttering for like Eighth Street, Ninth Street?
I, I would tell you that it would be under, I.
Oh, the sidewalks. It's under the sidewalks.
Okay, I didn't know, cause okay.
Sorry.
So it's under sidewalks. Alright. And I'm only asking because I didn't think we were putting, I thought we were just putting in a curb and gutter and not sidewalk on that. That's why I wasn't sure if that was included in that or not. Isn't that true? Like it's just curb and gutter.
With all the questions, and again, this is a recap, just to let y'all know where we stand on, on CIP. Something we're trying to do is let you know that things are rockin' and rollin' out there. We're moving along with the projects that you approved in the budget. And uh, you know, new things pop up too. And that's part of two, two of the questions we have tonight. Two, two new items popped up that was not expected. And if you have questions throughout the week, throughout the month, before the next meeting, please reach out to staff. They can answer any of your questions. Is that any other questions? And again, if you come up with any, just reach out to staff. Alright, we're gonna, um, I'm gonna move new roof storage up into the line. And that, that's gonna be DB again. Well, the next tier DV. Which, that's what a work session is about is. We're gonna get you some steps today.
There you go. I need it.
So we're gonna, because the, the one item is gonna be more detailed. It's gonna take a lot longer. These two are pretty simple. Roof replacement on the North Beach Christmas storage building, which I'm so happy and some of us were on the council back then when we built the new DPW. To keep this building, that was the original DPW building. And now it is a bathroom with a water fountain inside of it. And the rest of it is pretty much uh Christmas decorations. Maybe to lean to in the back has equipment, but I would say eighty percent is Christmas decorations for the town. So. Kudos. Thank God we saved it because it costs a lot of money to rebuild that, but we do need to take care of something that you can see that's Captain Obvious and that's the roof. Alright, DB, take over.
Um, as the mayor said, stated, he gave you a pretty good background. That was the original public workshop. And back when we got our new shop built about 2012, I believe, we converted that into restroom sort of park area, Wetlands Overlook Park and Christmas storage building. Uh, we did, at that time, we power washed the walls and painted the um sidewalls and did everything on that, but the roof wasn't in that bad a shape at that time and it's kind of roof was out of sight, out of mind. But as you can see today, that house is a very expensive group of Christmas decorations. So now I'm concerned that with the condition it is, as we could uh start having issues, leaks, everything else just by looking at that um could cause mold issues and other problems. So what this is asking you for, we did go out, we got quotes to put a coating on there. And the coating that we're talking about is um, if you read the literature brochure, it's, it says the last twenty years. To me, that's probably ten or fifteen, but for the price, um, we could get at least ten or fifteen more years and we could, like Veronica stated earlier, put something else maybe in the budget if we have to go further than just this coating. But for now, I think it will protect us, protect all our investments and restrooms that are in there for a pretty low, I mean fifteen, I think it was fifteen-three or fifteen-two for the cost of the um treatment that they're gonna put on the roof to save that. And like the mayor said, that would cost probably a hundred and fifty thousand dollars nowadays to build a, building that size. So um, what we're asking for is your permission to move ahead with the contract to do the roof coating. It is weather dependent, so um, this summer we were looking at, but you can also not do it when it's as hot as summer as we had, it'll bubble up and it won't really adhere as good. Heat is almost as bad as cold for this product, so um, we waited a little, a little while, but now we're, we'd like to get this done before you know, real cold weather sets in.
Linda, go ahead and just uh explain the fin, the financing part of this.
Absolutely, Mayor. Um, during the FY26 budget process and Councilwoman Crosby, I don't, I think we briefed Mr. Kramer on that, but let me just recap. We um, we put in a contingency fund for the council for emergency projects or projects that popped up during that fiscal year that you know, the council wanted to direct or we had emergency spending on. We can't spend that money without the direction and approval of the council. So that's why we're asking to do that because it wasn't budgeted within the DPW budget line. And we don't have the authority to spend your money without coming before you. And if you would like us to continue with this out of that funding line, we will bring it back next week with an amendment to the budget.
Thank you.
Um, just have a question. What color is going to be the roof?
You can pick.
You know, it's for a very important reason.
Uh, we, we have talked about white just as it's cool. You know, we painted white, it'd be a lot cooler in the summer. But they do have, I think, eight different colors. So if the council has a preference.
Favorite of white just because of the, of the savings of that.
Right. And that was recommended by the uh company that came out.
I've had a similar product put on a roof at my work.
Okay.
So over a flat asphalt roof, they put a polymer on top of that and we went white and we did notice a cooling savings when we did that, so. That's easy.
So I, my question is, since this is coming out of a contingency fund, is this an emergency or is this something that we could potentially do next year? And you know, why are we doing this now is basically my question.
Just because of the shape of the condition at the roofs and um, I would almost call it an emergency. I watched Fox Five Weather this morning and I don't know if they're accurate or not, but what I'm concerned about, if we get, they were talking about four or five snowstorms in the colder winter than we normally get. So if you get like three inches or four inches of snow and it's laying up on the roof and it does start to get a spot that's leaking, then we take the risk of it leaking through and destroying the bathrooms or the Christmas decorations. I mean, they're gonna be out till the end of December, but you know, we take a chance on losing that just because of the upcoming winter weather forecast. We could put it off, but I'd feel uh better about getting it done sooner the better, just because of the condition that's in.
Can you even get up there to repair it or is it in bad enough shape that it'd just be dangerous?
That's um, the contractor, that's why we turned it over to them. Uh, to, the gentleman that came out did the estimate, he felt pretty you know, sure. They said, you know, they do it all the time. This one wasn't bad shape. You know, it's getting to be where if we waited too much longer, you might have to put all new metal on it, you know, but it, he um, his estimate and his recommendation was he could save it with this product now and we could get, you know, like I say, it's uh, the product is scheduled for twenty years. If you read the literature, it, it doesn't air to last for a twenty-year lifespan. So I feel for that price, we're, we're getting a lot of value. Didn't save a lot of uh building.
So uh, excuse me, you said that you had uh, got some estimates?
Yes, sir.
What were the other estimates cost?
The, the estimate, and we put a twenty percent contingency on it, is eighteen thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars. The original estimate's fifteen thousand, one hundred dollars, but with the contingency, it'll be eighteen, two hundred.
So you, you only got an estimate from one contractor?
No, we have three bids on it.
Okay, that's what I'm asking.
Oh, I'm sorry, I couldn't.
What was the other?
We um, I did. Amanda has.
Not, not to cut you off, but in the past, we've gotten to see what the contracts were, the estimates. So I would like to start seeing the spreadsheet again, so I can see what we're spending money on and make a, to me, I'm kinda, and don't take this wrong way. You should give recommendations, but we're the one that's gonna have to appropriate this money to be spent. So I would like to see exactly what I'm looking at. I, I wanna see exactly what the other costs are, so we can make a better informed decision.
No, that makes perfect sense. Amanda or procurement?
We'll send that to you and uh, the procurement officer actually does have the three bids. I believe she's already pulled recommendations, but we'll get that out to you.
Yeah, and if we could see that for anything that we're gonna be asked to spend money on, please, in the future. But uh, other than that, I, I don't have any problems moving forward with this. So I, I think it's something we definitely need to get, get done. So I won't say anything else, but if we need a motion, I'll make a motion. We go ahead and do this. Boom, that's it. Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Does anybody else have any other questions? Now, we're gonna bring this back next week. Nope, he said no.
The only thing I was gonna say was um, when we were talking about it earlier today. My first question was if it's leaking and I don't know how long it's been leaking, but it, at least in my mind, it started to beg the question of, well, you know, leaky roofs can lead to some serious structural issues. And so I was wondering, okay, so are we replacing the roof? Is it bad enough that the whole roof needs to be replaced or are we just, what are we doing here? What?
This is a coating that goes on.
Yeah.
And it's uh, like silicone coating. And when it goes on, it's an eighth inch or I don't know how many millimeters, but in the, in the literature it tells you, but it's like an eighth inch thick roughly. And then that becomes pliable. It's almost like the rolled rubber roofing, but it's, it's applied sprayed on.
So I mean, but the structure itself is fine.
Yes, it's not leaking currently, but it's getting pretty close to the point where you could have issues. If we get, like I say, if we get three or four inches of snow and we have a cold winter, then you know, it could possibly be like next spring, it could be leaking. So it's, it's right pretty close to the end of its life. But this product can protect that and they showed other, we had examples of other places they did it and you know, looks brand new in the last fifteen, twenty years. You apply this and that's what the big benefit of this product is. You don't have to replace all the metal. And for that price, you know, you can get a whole new, pretty much a whole new roof to extend the building life.
Yeah, I'm not a fan of leaky roofs, so I mean, we could do.
They're not good.
Protect your investment and what's in that building too. So.
Right.
You know, I, I, I you know, I know this is something, if it needs to be done, it needs to be done. I, I don't like le, I mean, my own house, it's like I get one shingle missing and it's like, so.
And I think you were um, so when do you wanna start this pro, like when, cause I know it's weather dependent if you're talking about. So like, it can't be too hot, can't be too cold. You know, can't be wet. So ideally, is this something that needs to be started now before December or like what are we?
We're cutting it pretty close. And if we probably, if we don't vote on it in the council meeting and don't get it approved, then I'll probably be coming back and saying, hey, we need to replace the roof by next spring.
Yeah.
And then also.
Like, okay.
Well, also I did talk to, cause I wanted to inform you all the best I could on pricing. And January first, we got the quote, um, I think it was May, the original quotes. But then January first, prices do go up. I don't know how much they'll go up, but after the new year, the price for this project would go up. Maybe ten percent. I'm not sure. That'd be a great deal. And I mean, it could last to the spring, but I just.
Biggest challenge is, is getting quotes. I don't know if y'all called any contractors lately. Trying to get three quotes for stuff to make sure we're doing what's fiscally right for the town takes, really pushes us to weeks and months of getting prices together. It's, it takes a long time to find somebody else that can do this kind of work. We've been patch, we've been sealing it up for the last couple of years between waterfront staff and DPW. We've, we've been on there. It's still structurally sound. You know, it's not, you're not, um, and again, you know, we, we, we get your approval next week. We move forward. We probably can knock it out. We'll let him know or let that company know that day. We'll get the other numbers to you to show the difference. But it's, we still got time. We still got time.
Mayor, wh- why are we waiting for next week? We can, we can just make a motion pass and I, he can get on, he can get on about his business. There's nothing precluded. You can make a vote in a work session. A meeting is a meeting. That's a name we attached.
That would be better.
We can, we can do it. Let's do it. I, I have never recall. Show it to me writing. I, I don't.
There's nothing that says you can do it. All, all the reason I'm saying this is because you, you know me, I dig in and I, but trust me. My point is, a few years back, there was discussions about this and if you go and look at the statute and I'm definitely not at a turn and not claiming to be one, but the state considers a meeting, a meeting. We attach work session or whatever. So you can vote at any meeting.
This is also under the threshold too, I think, right? For the mayor's. Isn't this under the threshold for the mayor to be able to approve as well if needed?
Our goal is to bring you information to make sure y'all were prepared. If you're prepared to vote.
We're voting.
You're voting. I, I understand what you're saying.
It is Councilman, uh, that's right, sorry, Councilman Heel. Humble. But it's your contingency funding, so the mayor can't spend it without your authority.
Right.
Thank you.
So I'm good. We, again, our goal is always to give you transparency, give you an information. If you wanna vote tonight, I'm all about it. Let's do it. Who, Greg, make a motion.
Motion.
Give me to it.
I'm sorry, I think Karen wanted to say something. I'm sorry. I saw her turn a mic on.
I hadn't quite turned it on. The one I was gonna say is procedurally, a lot of jurisdictions do not allow for voting at work sessions. So it's really what your rules call for. So what they will do is amend the agenda to um, go into special session in order to vote on something. But I think what I've heard from staff is that you have voted in your work sessions before. So.
That was a long time.
It was done.
I'm very. I'm very, I'm very, I'm good with it. And the thing is, what, what Councilman Dotson's saying, we determine what the meeting is. So we have a motion to approve. The, can you just read exactly what that is, Greg? I, I apologize. Just make sure it's in the record. Let's just keep moving.
Okay, uh, I'd like to make a motion that uh, we spend approve a contingency of eighteen thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars to, for public works to replace the Christmas storage building roof. I'm sorry, not to replace, but to repair the roof.
Have a motion?
That's efficient.
We have a second? Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Six love.
Get busy.
Thank you. Uh, weather, weather dependent. I, I appreciate your uh, doing that because it is weather dependent. If it wasn't as weather dependent, I wouldn't be as worried.
So you have one more, but we have also showing, if you haven't noticed around town, um, we've been hitting six to eight, up to ten maybe saddles every Tuesday and then also the same on Thursday. On the streets that are affected, we haven't, we have hung door hangers. We have done social media blast out. It's on the website. We've done. We have done social media blast out. It's on the website. We've done absolutely everything to let residents know what we're doing. And what we're finding uh is 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 pretty interesting, to say the least. But the good news is, is it's it's getting done quickly. Now, having said that, it's getting done so quickly that we're coming back to y'all because we actually have to buy more saddles. Uh it is working. We're fixing, we're fi- I'm I'm telling you, you're gonna see a big difference in all of our water as this stuff is coming on. Some of the saddles, when they dig by it, they actually pop off. The bolts have been gone, rusted off. I know we've beaten this, but I just want to let you know, that's the reason why we're bringing this back in front of you, because we have two, they're doing a great job knocking this out between that support of DPW and the contractors. We are moving, when residents should be very happy with this, because it's really is fixing an issue that could become a problem soon. I'll turn it back over to you.
The mayor tells a very good job. I gave him the background for me, so that was great. Appreciate that. And he has been out on site, and we appreciate it. And several council members have also been out on site when we're doing the job, we're doing the work. Um like the mayor said, we did have money in the twenty-six budget. We did purchase a hundred and five of the saddles, and we secured a contractor on the county, um piggyback county for labor bid. Um we started off during a couple a week, and we didn't want the residents to have to experience a shutdown of water to get two or three saddles done. So we bumped it up a little bit, and like the mayor said, we're up to six to eight. Um each day we do it, and we were doing it on Tuesday and Thursday. So we're knocking out twelve to fourteen saddles a week, and we've already knocked out some streets. Um to date, we did like forty-eight saddles uh to date that we installed so far. And actually, with the labor and us assisting, um the original estimate was around two thousand dollars for including everything saddle material, backfill material. Um we got that down to fourteen hundred dollars, um because, you know, the public work is assisting. Uh it's working out well. The crews are working out well. We got kind of a system going now. Um we would like to continue because we're getting close to the twenty-six budget, CIP budget amount. We would like to continue while the weather is, but I'd like to just show you, just show you why. And I know y'all seen me, I don't want to keep beating the gun, but this is not a good thing. When you see a saddle that's in this condition and out of the forty-eight that we repaired, we probably had forty hour in this condition. Like I said, we had three where we had to shut the water off. Three cases, we had to shut the water off early because it took a shuttle, a tap gun to find this out. Tap on the saddle, the whole thing blew off. But this is under the roads, under the streets now. You have the potential, if it gets cold this winter, it could uh, which president called in the road shift, some money is to pop all in the middle of the night, which made it from office emergency, set it off on Monday. This is where we're trying to be proactive and get as many needs done under normal conditions where we can find the uh set offs of the water. Crews are not making overtime, they're all ready for stuff. This is what we're putting in. So that is what you're getting in place. This is stainless steel. Monica's making you.
Can't move back then.
This is currently, this is what we purchased. These are stainless steel. I mean, these have been around a long time. When I'm gone, I'm sure. This is a great improvement over there. That was in nineteen ninety-two when the assault original. Um these go on well. They have a stainless steel connection also, so you don't have to worry about that rusting out or whatever. And then we're using uh plastic pipe to go back, so you don't have to worry about the plastic either. So I would like to continue with the project, knock out as many as we have in stock.
Those steps then, buddy.
Yeah, while we have that, while we have the crews, while we have the system, we're kind of going through. The residents are getting kind of used to it. We're not getting, you know, we're putting outdoor tags, like the mayor said, we're putting social media posts, we're doing everything we can to let them know. The water was off from eight thirty this morning, just because the one came off, but we were back on by ten thirty, and that's six saddles. So when you plan it, you have a lot less shutdown time. If you come out in the middle of the night, you have to find the valves and emergency situation. It could take you six to eight hours to do one. So it's a big benefit for doing it. Um what I would recommend or like to do, we have uh road repaving money. But to me, it wouldn't make any sense at all to pave a road when you have a saddle in that condition underneath of it. So we would like to move some of the money from the road paving into where we could put in the saddle replacements, and we could continue on and use that money to continue with the crew we have, the labor we have, and keep going. And at least use up the saddles we have in stock, if not more, if that's the council's preference.
And this is a hundred percent weather dependent, and it, I don't know about you, but a weather person says it's fifty fifty chance on anything in life. We're gonna do this until the weather says we can't do it, and they are knocking them out pretty quick. And so that's basically why we want to get it to you tonight. It is going a lot faster than what we planned for it, that we thought could happen. So Linda, Veronica, do y'all have anything to add about the financial part of it?
Um I'll just jump in really quick, if it's okay, Veronica, since I'm hearing the mic. So Mayor, we had um, I am so sorry, I went to the twenty-seven.
Seventy-five.
We had seventy-five thousand this year budgeted, which we're we're bumping up against pretty close. We had budgeted two hundred and thirteen thousand dollars for road repaving, which Donnie has explained, he does not want to cut up the road, pave the road, cut up the road.
Right.
So we're gonna delay the road repaving, and we're asking that we can realign the twenty-six capital improvement money that we had for road repaving into the saddle replacement, so that they can go ahead and continue this. And Donnie, I don't know if you want to talk about water conservation issues here or not, but I think it's a, I think it's a good point to talk.
Yeah, it's a very good point you bring up, because out of the forty-eight that we replaced, I'd say fifty or sixty percent were leaking. So, you know, we look at the flow meter every day when we go, and we have to check the water station. Um the town uses around a hundred and twenty thousand gallons of water, you know, before the saddle replacement started a day on a daily basis. It goes up some in the summer, of course, but um today, for instance, the reading was a hundred thousand gallons. So that's a twenty-five thousand gallon reduction.
Be very clear. This leak, this water is not going through the residence meters.
Right.
They're not being charged for a leak. This is on out in the street where the saddle is. I just want to be very clear. This is not at all being charged to the resident. It's not even close to the meter. Just want to be very clear.
Very good point with that. The meter I'm referring to is on the water uh water tower itself, the well that provides water to the water tower. We look at that every day. We get a daily reading from that meter. And that is a big thing, because M D makes you do a water audit. So that, we have to put a groundwater permit in to, you know, get our recommended gallons that we can withdraw from the ground. This saves us actually on our withdrawal permit and everything else. And then also, they love seeing you when you're doing things to save water, because everything's about conservation now, water with droughts and everything that's going on. So that's another big plus. I'm glad you brought that up then. And we look for that to only get better, because like I say, we did forty-eight, and it's already seemed like it, you know, I don't say all that twenty-fives from that, but it's something, you know, it's consistently down from when we started. So, you know, I'd say some of it's winter weather, you're not watering flowers, you're not doing as much. But it also has definitely got to be a savings. We have seventy in stock, but we can purchase more if we get the approval with no problem.
How many more to replace?
Um that's, that's the big question. If we do the hundred and five, we probably have uh four hundred left, four forty probably, right? But we're knocking out, you know, I was thinking three of eight wasn't getting it, but we're doing, if we do forty-eight a month, you know, almost fifty a month, that's not as bad as what, yeah, ten months roughly.
Weather.
As you can see, it's it's a necessity there. It's not like we're, it's only a matter of time before we'll experience more failures.
I was wondering, with with these leak, with with the amount of leaking they're getting with these things, um is that affecting the water pressure in town at all?
Now, the pressures, um you know, the tower level is the same. It cuts on at a certain level, say sixty-two PSI. It cuts on and cuts off at sixty-eight.
Water out of the.
But we're losing water out there. It's not a big enough leak to, you know, constantly make the wells run. They run about four hours a day, each well. So we're not, but now they're running three and a half hours, you know, three and three, you know, three hours, forty-five minutes. But it's not enough. It's a small enough leak where you wouldn't notice the uh pressure. Yeah, because the wells they're putting out like two hundred gallons a minute apiece, so they can keep up with any of that. But it's definitely saving a lot on the conservation side.
What is the final uh fiscal impact that y'all are looking for?
Well, if we take the money out of the road repaving budget, then we have two hundred and thirteen thousand in that road repaving right now. It's already in.
You don't, we have a hundred and ninety-two thousand in the road repaving, because you spent twenty of it on Seventh Street or something. We have a meeting every Thursday, and we go over the CIP with all of the department heads, so they have to update us. And I keep them updated about where they are financially. But um you did Greenwood, Dayton Avenue and Greenwood, paving down Devonport for funding for road repaving, you did?
That was the main bomb, Devonport.
Yeah.
We did a lot of, some of that paving is the patching that we have to do for those saddles. Because we've completed um Eighth Street, Ninth Street, and working on Fourth and Sixth Street now we complete. So some of that money was used for patching.
We have a hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars.
Out of that one ninety-two, what are you asking for?
What do you mean?
One ninety-two would be nice. No. I'll make a deal, one ninety. Now, if we could uh get a hundred and fifty out of that, that would be great. And then we would save the other money for a patching. Um because I, like I say, in my opinion, it's a waste to pave a road, and if you're gonna cut it up, you know. So that wouldn't make sense to do any main streets right now until we get the saddles completed. Then hopefully, when we do the paving, we get a better price because we're doing more volume.
One fifty.
One fifty would be great, my money lady says.
But you ha- if you look in the memo, it says one fifty.
Oh, I think you just pulled that.
I knew that was in the memo, but since we had one ninety-three and some change.
I was gonna wait to see what, but yes, it's one fifty. Um and that will leave money left over at the patch. We're trying to patch after we get twenty or thirty of them. Now, we're not trying to patch it every five minutes.
Right.
Uh so in front of Councilman Humble's house, so we apologize, we did fill it back in. Um.
He's good.
Yeah, but you have to let that stuff settle anyway before you do the patch, before you have the same issue.
One hundred percent.
It's even like when you do the cuts in the new houses, you leave it for gravel for a bit to see how it all shakes out.
And we left a nice one in front of your house, but we've, yeah, I'm sorry. Um so we do, we are asking for one fifty. We are asking for a motion. Can somebody please make a motion or any other discussions?
Yeah, that's, how many is that gonna buy? How many?
Is that gonna buy? They're roughly three hundred apiece. We have, we have fourteen hundred for each. So we could get a hundred, say roughly a hundred more done.
And we get another hundred done.
Right.
We have a total of over four hundred. You've done a hundred, you've done seventy something?
No, we did forty-eight.
Done forty-eight?
Yeah, we have seventy left in stock.
This would be halfway, about halfway. Yeah, under halfway, forty percent.
Like a third probably, yeah.
A hundred and seven, I'm, we can do.
Right.
We're getting there. We're knocking it out, but even then, we're gonna be going into bad weather here in a couple of months, so we're gonna be delayed anyway. But if we get them now, we're gonna stay on the cost increase that everything goes up in life. So we'll have them in stock, ready to go, ready to knock it out. Every time we have a good weather, we have two great contractors. We're rolling. I'm really excited, because I really don't have water's working, truthfully, if you look at that, but that's another day. All right. Any other questions?
Questions?
All right, can somebody make a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I think we can wait till next week. I mean, this is not like the the sealant for the roof, because that needs to be done right now. They already, they still already have seventy to go.
Yeah, I mean, I was on the road.
I I.
Why, why the labor can do tonight?
I think between now and then, they're gonna put all seventy in. So I think, I think we can wait.
We can do that.
I think we can.
Get excited. Councilman Dotson said we could vote, so.
We could probably find incessant, consensus that.
Luckily.
That's the word.
Luckily, Tuesday's Veterans Day is a holiday for us, so we won't be working Tuesday, so Thursday, Thursday will be the next day, so that'll line up perfect.
So Thursday, if you're ready, come to vote. You got the information? Let's make it happen. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
You can sit down.
Thank you. Thank you for everything.
Very good discussion. All right.
Very Christmas.
You get a chance, though, seriously, I know some council members have. Get a chance. Every Tuesday and Thursday. Next week is gonna be Wednesday and Thursday, I believe.
We're thinking Thursday.
This Thursday.
Yeah, we got their lead.
All right, so Thursday will be next week. Veterans Day is Tuesday. Um Councilman Dotson and I will be celebrating.
No.
All right, I'm gonna turn the next one over to Linda.
All right, uh, thank you, Mayor. So early when I started with the town, about a year, I can't believe it's been a year and a half, but about a year and a half ago, we did a, the mayor asked me to take a look at all of the different things that we were doing from a town perspective. Some of it was looking at salaries, job descriptions, just the, you know, healthcare administrative operations, just the things that you would do as a normal course of business. And one of the things we got stuck on was the healthcare costs for staff. And we are part of the state healthcare system. We are considered a satellite office, so our costs are a little bit more expensive than if you're working at a state agency somewhere, they're more like COBRA prices that you would pay. And the the healthcare costs have gone up, and now we have a concern with the ARPA cost being, we think those are gonna be coming back up with the ARPA money running out this year, which is, I'll leave the politics out of it. But um we took a look at what we thought we could do from a healthcare perspective for staff. We brought a consultant in to take a look at, we we got a fairly, fairly inexpensive, inexpensive price to have Bolton Associates look at this for us. It was twenty-five hundred dollars. They looked at independent healthcare systems for us through companies like Blue Cross, Blue Shield, another one was Aetna. We looked at piggybacking contracts with other jurisdictions, both town government, state government, and municipalities. And what we found, we thought we were gonna be able to come to council and say, you know, we can do this without having to join anybody else. What, we thought we could go away from the state and get a better system in place. But what we found out was, we were better off staying where we were, because the costs were less expensive than to go independent or to be get back on another contract. So when we figured that out, it was close to late summer this year. So then we started talking internally about how we were gonna come to a recommendation to fund this. And right now, the town is covering one hundred percent of the employees' health benefits. So if you're a single person that works for the town, if you choose to take the health insurance, they cover those costs one hundred percent. And that includes your medical, your dental, and your vision. And so I think the vision's part of the medical, actually. And then the minute you add a second person onto those costs, the cost goes on average um from about seven hundred dollars to about sixteen hundred dollars. So let me make sure I'm giving that number correctly.
You're right.
That right, okay. So in some of the plans that we looked at, you know, sometimes when you just add one person on, it there's, it goes up incrementally. But in the system that we're in, the minute you add that second person, you're at double time. And you don't go back to single time unless you're in a, in a single person system. So um we took, took a look at that. We took a look at, okay, if we wanted to make a difference with the staff, how would we fund it? And we came up with basically four alternatives that we looked at. One was leave it alone, do nothing. Um and we talked to staff about that, and we did get some feedback from a good bit of the staff that were paying the family rate, that it was getting cost prohibitive for them. We looked at alternative contracts, which I mentioned. We looked at salary increases to cover those costs. But salary increases, uh like anything, are carrying costs that continue to add up over time with COLAs and new hires and and things of that nature. And normally, when you replace somebody, you're usually replacing them at a higher salary, just because if you've got staff that have been here long term. Um and we looked at different cost sharing um alternatives. Then I took a look at, we took a look at what other jurisdictions doing, both being municipal, state, local, and even the federal government. And the standard right now is an eighty-twenty split. So when we look at that, and we looked at our costs, we went, then went back to staff to find out what they thought about this, to see whether or not there was an interest and whether they wanted to make this kind of change. And we got a overwhelming yes. Um and those individuals that were single, that would not make any changes, I would recommend, if you make a change, we just leave it alone, because they're already budgeted at a hundred percent. However, if they choose to opt out, they would go to the eighty-twenty with no turning back. You know, one of the benefits, or several benefits I see for this, this is providing immediate relief to the families that we're covering under staff, for our staff. I I believe it's recruitment and retention issue. I think we've become a little bit more competitive, because now we're competing in the same capacity that we're competing with other jurisdictions to get uh good staff. I think it's promoting equity and fairness and benefits, and it's aligning with most common sector practices now. Now, I do want to mention, and Councilwoman Crosby asked me, when I briefed her, to take a look at what it would cost to do a ninety-ten split. And um we did look at that pretty, pretty quickly, but, and and thank you, Veronica and Joanne, for jumping on that yesterday for me. So I mentioned the employee contribution, and I'm using a higher, just from a budgeting standpoint. Employee contribution for family is thirteen ninety-five a month. For paycheck, it's six nine- Per paycheck is six ninety seven, so about seven hundred. And then the proposed eighty twenty split, the employee contribution would go down to four seventy four, per paycheck two thirty seven. And that it, and then at ninety twenty, it would go from four seventy four, ninety ten, I'm sorry, ninety ten would go from, it would go from to two thirty seven for the employee contribution or per paycheck contribution of a hundred and eighteen. The difference between the, looking at those two scenarios is that your, your eighty twenty increases your annual cost by thirty nine thousand. And in talking with Joanne, who's our treasurer and Veronica, who's our budget person, um we think we can easily absorb that with new revenue projections we have coming in. The six, the ninety ten split has a annual, annual carrying cost of about sixty four thousand dollars, we're estimating right now. We could cover that, but I'm not comfortable telling you I can cover it, cover it from revenue because we don't have our final revenue numbers locked down from the county yet. We did get something yesterday, but we haven't analyzed what that really looks like. So I think that if, no matter what we do, we will have to adjust in some capacity. If you wanted to go to the ninety ten split, I would probably have to cut something on, on some other program, which we wouldn't do without bringing it back to council. So um what I would like to do in speaking with the staff is if we could make this shift, we'd like to do it January first. And then anybody hired after January first would automatically go into whatever the split ratio was the council determined. Um we would be asking you to fund that out of your contingency account. It's about nineteen thousand dollars to do, nineteen five to do it. And um I think you'd be making a big, big difference in the life of some of your staff here. And that's, that's it, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
I do, I do wanna, so for seven years now as mayor, my goal has been to make sure that our staff, who I feel we have some of the best staff in the state and I, I deal with a lot of staff, are taken care of and, and you know, fairly with, with the challenges that everyone's going through. And I'm not just talking about now with the furlough and all that. I'm just talking overall, the cost of everything in life is going up through the roof. And they work so hard and I want to make sure to try to take care of them to the best of our ability. So you know, we, this didn't just happen tonight. So I, you know, this has been in the works ever since uh we, we hired Linda. But even before Linda, Stacy and I talked about it many times, Joey, we all talked about it, we looked into it. It is not a simple plan and when it comes to health insurance, I didn't realize how complicated it was. Um I'm really fearful because I hear um, I hear Medicare Medicaid's pretty tough too, and I'm getting close, so I'm really worried about that.
Close, you're not close.
Well, we're the same age, so yes.
When you have to apply next year like I do, then because you have no choice, then you're close.
Okay, 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 I'm not there yet. But I know what I go through as self-employed um and the battles I have. And I just, I just think this makes sense, I think this is something we could do. You know, we, we have new staff members coming in, you have turnover. This is definitely gonna put us in the same playing field with so many municipalities around us. But also they might not have to commute out to DC or commute out to the state of Maryland. We can keep them here in our, in our neck of the woods and, and hire them here because our benefits are matching or even a little bit better. I'm not here to compare what we do and to somebody else, I'm here to take care of our, our employees, our staff. You know, I, I don't, I'm not worried about what other people are doing. We did look at that to make sure it was in line and I'm very proud of what they can, that's a lot of work that went into this. And we know we're bringing it to you tonight and you know, we talked to you earlier this week, so I just wanna say that before y'all open up the floor to start talking.
Well, Linda, can you speak to open enrollment?
Yes, I'm, I'm, I meant to mention that, I'm, thank you, uh Councilwoman Healy. So ironically enough, open enrollment with the state of Maryland closes tomorrow. So um if you would like to make this change, it would be really beneficial to staff to do it tonight because they have to make that decision and they can't make that decision again until next year.
And again, we didn't sit on this, it didn't, wasn't in back closet, it just, sometimes in life, there's dumb luck.
This is one of the biggest puzzles I've worked on in a long time. And it, I cannot believe it took us as long as we did. And we started the discussion with Bolton a year ago, August. So it was, it's, it's taken a minute to get through this.
Uh since no one's speaking, I guess I'll come out with guns blazing. Don't take this the wrong way, but I don't think this is gonna happen to help them because they're closing this tomorrow. Now, I, I like the fact that we're trying to move in this direction. And Stacy, or someone remember that's been here for a while, correct me if I'm wrong. Did we discuss insurance not long ago? We were trying to help improve something, uh uh insurance. Yeah, okay, so um I appreciate the, the work that's been put into this, but uh the sample jurisdiction comparison is not really a good comparison because most of these towns on here are like thirty, forty, sixty, ninety thousand. I mean, we're, we're barely twenty one hundred people. There's not one town on here that's close to us. I mean, Leonard Town's about five thousand people, but to get a more accurate comparison, we need to look at towns that are close to two thousand or twenty five hundred people to see what they're doing for their employees. Now, don't take what I said the wrong way because like I said, I like trying to move in this direction. But I, I like to have accurate comparison so I can make a better informed decision on which direction we should go in to help with this type of situation. So um, yeah, I guess I know you guys put in a lot of work with this, but uh the comparison doesn't really help me come up with a, an accurate decision on which way to go. So right now, I'm not prepared to move on this. However, I would like to get something done. But for me, I can't make this happen tonight for, to try to help them make a decision tomorrow on the closure. That's it for now, I got a lot more to say, but I'll hold back.
No, keep going, alright.
Do I have the floor? Well, um with all due respect to my colleague, I am the number one supporter of deliberative processes. Okay, so I all want us to be informed and make informed decisions. However, on this issue, it's a no brainer for me. And the reason is that we want people to be good people who are in service of public service. We honor public service. And this is an incentive that is gonna take care of the generational employees that will come in to the town of North Beach. Babies and children, sick babies and children, they need to see a doctor. Our dependents need to see a doctor. And if, you know, it's been a while, but I also, they need in shelter too. And the economic environment that we are in is going to be brutal and we're gonna have to recover for a long time. And I want to make sure that our processes that we've instituted here are going to be sustainable and that we are creating an incentive for families to live, work and play here in North Beach.
Yes, it's mine. I'm in favor of this and besides what my colleague just said, uh the fiscal impact is not that high compared to our budget and compared to what we would probably, because we always underestimate how much we're gonna be getting in and we usually go beyond that. I think the uh return on investment is a lot greater for our people. So um I just don't see a significant fiscal impact about moving to this, that's all.
Yeah, um I can't say anything more than my colleagues down here said, but um I'm actually, as a public servant, we, we do work according to an eighty twenty split. And um I do think that it is a um provide some significant benefits. And um and if you want to talk about employee retention, getting people here when you're hiring, um I, I think it's the right thing to do.
So hypothetically, if we were to make a motion tonight to move on this for open enrollment, you know, would we be able to meet this deadline?
Would the staff be able to meet the deadline? Yes, they're, they're ready. We had, we spoke to them again today, they're ready.
Okay.
This just rolls for the full-time employees, right, not part-time or seasonal?
Definitely not seasonal, we do have a one part-time individual that receives benefits at this point.
Okay.
Beyond. Yeah.
Do we know roughly how many people are waiting on this decision to see if they pick up an open enrollment or?
We, we have, I think there's three. But we also um, I can't say names, obviously, but
Yeah.
the family members that, there's one, two, three, seven, eight that take the family coverage would, I mean, they're not gonna change because they're already enrolled, but they'll see the immediate relief in January. But we have.
And you were planning?
For budgeted this to the point.
If we roll it tonight, you plan to enact it starting the January one cycle, so these first couple of weeks would be?
Yes, it would, they would. Yes, it happens, the open enrollment change flips January first. Yeah, so they make their decision now and then it starts in January.
Okay, yeah, see, mine is open enrollment here and then like three days later is when it kicks. And so, so that's why I was. I'm, I, I agree with Greg, it'd be nice to, to have more talk about this, but I also see this as definitely employer retention thing. I know there are people who have been looking for jobs and they definitely look at healthcare as one of them. And that savings right there is huge, um especially for some entry level. Honestly, like that's a whole paycheck that gets wiped out. So I, I, I do agree, it'd be nice to talk about it more. But I think this is a good way to move now um and doing it so that those three who are on the fence can get it now, knowing that it kicks in January one, when the open enrollment happens. And I don't know if there's a way where we could give them enough assurance where if we want to talk about it more, but I don't know if any, if those three would buy, like I saying, like, look, we like the way it's going, but we're gonna talk about it more. Can you go on faith with us to? So.
Well, like I said, I said it twice.
Yeah.
I wanna help.
Yeah.
I support this, but I don't like having my back
Again.
put against the wall at the last minute, you know, why didn't this come up sooner? I mean, you've been working on this for a while. And so uh for you all that know me for a while, this, this is how I operate, so a- again.
And, and Greg, I, I completely agree, I hate being backed against the wall too. And I know at my work, honestly, we had a talk, my company changed providers, like from one company to another. We didn't even know the shakedown price until after it went out. So we just said, hey, this is a new company, you're gonna pay something, hopefully it's around what you used to pay.
Yeah.
Um and we all had to make a decision if we were gonna do that or go something else, so.
Yeah, I, I mean, I agree with y'all, I mean, I, I don't, anybody that knows me and knows me well knows I do not make decisions quickly. That's just not my nature. But um I do think that there is time and place where it would have been nice to have this a little bit earlier to be able to um review it and, and talk about it more.
How about we do this, if I can cut in, like I said, I said for a fourth time now, I'll just cut to the chase. I support this if you want to do it, but we need to put something in place at any time, something like this come forward again. I want a thirty day review before we go to it, cause I'm not gonna be in this position again. I'm not gonna do it.
I agree.
I agree with that.
Well, the good news is, we make a million decisions and this is the only one that we put y'all's back against the wall. So fixing that is not a problem and we will do our best, but just put in perspective that we do a ton of decisions up on this dais. This is one, you're absolutely right, but this is not, we don't do this all the time. This is a complete, we apologize, we will do everything in our power to make sure this never happens again. It, it just happened and we apologize, we did not mean to do it, we understand it's a big decision. Trust us, we talked about it today and I said, I'm telling you now, I already know what's gonna go down. And um you know, I, I, I work on the pleasure of you guys, you let me know what you want to do.
So I'm, I'm gonna cut in right here, so uh it looks like from our phone call and plus what we're looking at here, you're recommending the eighty twenty, correct? Based on the numbers I see here?
I am recommending eighty twenty based on what I know on the budget numbers today, yes.
Okay, and take me through what the cost is gonna be for the, for thirty nine thousand, I, I see it.
Thirty nine thousand annually, beginning July first, fiscal twenty seven.
For all, is this?
Increase.
Increase.
Got it, yeah.
From January first to June thirtieth is nineteen thousand five hundred and thirty dollars and nineteen cents.
Alright, so employees will, will have the option to go to this, right? This is a mandatory, right?
They're absolutely the option to stay put or move over.
Alright.
The only caveat is if they move over, they can't go backwards.
That's, that's fine, yeah, I know how that part works. Okay, alright.
And uh I have a, I, I just want to clarify too, um just for the record, so um the eighty twenty split, it's four hundred and seventy four dollars per paycheck?
Proposing sample.
Uh, or, or a family?
Yes, it goes from the eighty twenty, no ma'am, it goes from, under the current system, it goes per paycheck from six ninety seven seventy nine, we fine tuned these numbers just a little bit yesterday. On the eighty twenty split, the per paycheck cost on average is two seventy, two thirty seven thirty three.
Two thirty seven thirty three per paycheck and that's two paychecks a month, yes ma'am, right? So that's over four hundred dollars. And in what I'm proposing, which is the ninety ten split, it's um a hundred and eighteen dollars, yes. So I mean, that's a car payment, that's groceries, um baby formula.
But the cost, the cost, that I was gonna ask it, what was the cost per to town?
If the ninety ten?
With the councilwoman that's talking about, how much, I'm sorry.
Give me to cover that here.
Yes, the ninety ten cost to the town goes from, or explain that.
So the ninety ten, you may just go current proposed ninety ten?
Yeah, thank you.
Current town cost annually is one hundred and eighty thousand, one hundred and eighty five dollars. The eighty twenty split is two nineteen, two forty five. And the ninety ten would be two forty four, four fifty, four sixty seven.
Two, two what?
Two four four.
Yep.
Four six seven. The total annual equivalent is two seventy six, two eighty, that's the, that's the baseline across the board, that's the total cost for the employee and the town. So one more time, current annual cost is one eighty, one eighty five. The eighty twenty split is two nineteen, two forty five. The ninety ten split would be two forty four, four fifty, four sixty seven. Or annual equivalent at eighty twenty of thirty nine thousand sixty, ninety ten annual cost of sixty four, two eighty two.
Maybe five thousand more.
Yep.
We're gonna make, oh, I got in trouble last time I said this. We're gonna make the motion, but so we have two on the table, we have eighty twenty and then we have ninety ten. And we, we need a, which way are we moving with this?
My opinion is, not to say that yours is a very good idea, uh let's take baby steps. Let's do the eighty twenty because we can always revisit this next year before they get into uh the next uh open season. So we can always do that again, it's just that tonight, we've got less than twenty four hours to let them do it. The numbers have been calculated, we've got something. The numbers have been calculated, we've got something already there at the, at the eighty-twenty, ninety, but ninety-ten is a better idea. But we just really don't, we're not, we're less prepared for that than it is for the eighty-twenty that we have right now. So, my suggestion is that we go for the eighty-twenty, and then sometime with more than thirty days out of when the next o- open season happens, let, sometime late spring, then we revisit this and maybe move it up to ninety-ten, but I don't think we're in a position right now to really discuss it, because it really was not, this memo did not address that.
I'll, I'll jump. I move to go out to do eighty-twenty, having the grandfather clause in for anybody currently on at the existing hundred percent for employee, that if they keep that, we'll honor it, but then anybody new is eighty-twenty if they elect into our system.
Second. Have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Still moved. Thank you so much, guys. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Good job. And I promise you, I, it's on videotape, I'm gonna do better with this, so don't yell at me.
I know where you live at.
Listen, I've been on, I've been on council with him probably the longest here. Paul knows, right? Why you laughing? He laughed. He laughed. Alright. Alright, alright guys, we, we have one more meeting to go to. Close section, this meeting will be closed under, this meeting will be closed under the Maryland Code Annotated General Provision, Art, Article three dash three oh five B seven, to consult with council to obtain legal advice, fourteen, before a contractor's order or bids are open to discuss a matter directly related to a negotiating strategy or the contents of a bid or proposal. A public discussion disclosure would adversely impact the ability of the public body to participate in the competitive bidding or proposal process.
Still moved.
Still moved. Second, any discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Alright.